Good evening, we're gonna continue the meetings tonight with Committee of the Hole. And what we have on the agenda is to have a further discussion about the budget if anybody's interested in doing that. We had a number of council members that were unable to attend the recent Committee of the Hole meetings regarding the budget. There was a recommendation that came out of the last Committee of the Hole to recommend to the full council to approve the mayor's budget as presented, I believe. And basically, we put an agenda item on here tonight, so for those that were unable to attend the meetings, if they had any thoughts or questions or concerns, they'd have a opportunity to express some before we vote on the budget, which is scheduled for November 14th. And then for anybody that did attend the meetings, that may have additional follow-up questions. So we don't really have any presentations for you tonight. Everybody hopefully has the information they need, and we'll open it up for discussion. And if there's no discussion needed, then we can do whatever you folks would like to do, all the person Borisma.
I clearly was one of those people who had to not be here for a number of the meetings. And I did have a couple of questions of Tammy, if that's okay. And that is, I've always been concerned about, you know, what we do from year to year, but also in terms of planning for the next five years and all that. And I guess I would like just a brief summary of how you think we're heading and whether or not we can keep up the level of borrowing we have been doing recently. I'm concerned about borrowing in a number of areas to include the public works facility. And just to give us kind of an update, if you would, on our fiscal wellbeing, if you could. It's a long, it's a big task, but I wasn't here for a lot of the discussions.
Well, the only thing I can really tell you is that we've gone over and discussed, we haven't discussed debt as part of this, but prior to the budget workshops, we've been discussing debt and looking at our borrowing levels and our debt burden ratio. And that is something that we will have to look into. We do have the ability to borrow more funds. I can't recall the number off the top of my head, I didn't plan for that for tonight, but I can get that out to you. In fact, it is probably part of some of the information I've already distributed. I know that we were looking at the potential of reaching our 4% cap, the debt burden ratio that's in our current debt management policy. That would probably be in maybe two years. It all depends on what the council decides to do. All I can tell you right now is based on the capital improvements that we've planned out for five years, that's kind of the information I've been able to give you. But if we have to go out and borrow any more funds for any future demolitions, any future TIF districts, anything beyond what the city has already planned for, that's something we would definitely have to look at. Overall, though, I mean, we're doing very well. We have a very good balance in our undesignated fund balance. That's always something that Moody's comments on when they give us our ratings to go out to borrow for funds. We are a double A, too, and we've been able to maintain that because you've been aggressively repaying your debt as fast as you can.
And just a follow-up question, and that is if interest rates would go up dramatically, would we be in more trouble? Or would we cap out at that 4% quicker?
Actually, the state calculates your debt burden utilizing only principal. They do not look at interest. So the interest doesn't become a factor in your level of debt. It is part of your repayment, though, so yes, those amounts could increase, and your levy could potentially increase. We saw an increase of about $286,000 this year from last year's debt level repayment to 18's debt level repayment. And you'll also see an increase going into '19.
Thank you.
Did I see all the person Kittleson, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. I just want to know if I can get an answer to this stuff. Maybe I can, maybe I can't. When the department heads come in and they present their budget, do they provide any documentation to you as to why they need this extra person, don't need this extra person?
Yep, you all should have seen that in with the, I think it was the first night that the budget information went out.
It's in with your slides as well, the bubble sheets, the memos. That's the information we've received, so.
But it isn't really...
Justifications.
Yeah, it's kind of vague, and I'm not here, believe me, I'm not here to beat the Opera House. This isn't what I'm here for. But the question I would ask is now, does Bill come and does he have documentation as to far as to say, like, the economic impact that it really has? Has he gone out and talked to local businesses? Has show nights really, have they seen an increase?
I think it's anecdotal. I don't know that he can show you data that he's collected. I do know that businesses will tell him, as well as others, that, boy, you know, Opera House nights, or, give me a heads up when you got a show coming, because I'm gonna put extra staff on. I know there's one in particular that says, I wouldn't be in business, it's a restaurant, if it weren't for the Opera House, because that's where I get my customers from.
I'm not disagreeing.
No, I'm just saying, anecdotally, I can't show you data or anything, but, you know, that is very true.
Because I was just kind of wondering if that's how they presented it to you, to say, this is really why I need it.
Yep, it's always a conversation about, what are you looking for? You know, and I know, because I meet with them on a monthly basis, I know what their struggles are in departments, so I can understand, you know, what they're asking for. But we do talk about, you know, what would the extra person do? How would it alleviate your staff, I don't want to say constraints, but the stressors that they have trying to get the things done, or the things that they can't get done.
Okay. I do have, I have four questions. I apologize for that. But 1A is, I had a discussion with Planning Director Rodney Sheal out in the parking lot, and I had asked him if he could remember the conversation that we had. And I was wondering if you could maybe share a little bit of that with us tonight?
We covered a lot of ground.
Oh, we did.
I'll try to cover a few of the points. You know, some of the discussion was related to staffing levels. And I think we had a candid conversation about observations that you have had as a visitor to City Hall, and that I have amongst the team of people that I work with. And I think, you know, candidly, I'm here to tell you, a lot of us are working at a fever pitch. There's a lot of people that are working very hard to manage the workload and are struggling in doing so. And it's very stressful. And so, when people are asking for staff, and/or are not asking for staff, it's recognizing that they're feeling the heat. And it's difficult, because workloads ebb and flow. We've had a pretty solid workflow for a number of years, and there hasn't, you know, just prior to this, I had a conversation, you know, we used to have a slow time. That was like 20 years ago. I'd have like a week or two in December and January where it was a little slower. But we're not recognizing that on a daily basis. So I don't think the request for staffing or recognizing your employees is a frivolous request. I think that was part of what we talked about. We also talked a little bit about growth and development. I think we'd all love to hit a home run on every project and hope that every project can be a 10. Not all of them can be, but I think sometimes we have an opportunity to send a solid message that at least indicates we're willing to discuss the development proposals. And I think sometimes we've maybe not provided that upfront guidance. As a staff member, oftentimes, I meet with folks or hear from developers or people interested in projects. And I'm certainly trying to give them as positive an outlook as I can, because I think most of the things that come to us are positive. And if somebody has a market for the requests that they're, or they think there's a market for whatever they're gonna build or construct or do here, generally, I think our community is trying to be in a position to embrace that. But not all the time is the message clear, that that's the case. So I think there's an opportunity to build on that. I think we've seen more recently, infill development is very tough. It is something that we all strive for. You can look at our comprehensive plan going back any number of years, and there's always been at least an initiative to try to encourage and support infill development. And I think we're all seeing that that's a very difficult road. It's not that it's not attainable, but there's a lot of challenges with infill development, whether it's contamination, or existing development nearby in residents. And so sometimes, we have to really look at it carefully to see how that can be an overall good for the community or not. And having a unified message is near impossible, but having a majority of a message, I think, is helpful for a staff person to probably convey that message to people interested in our community. So I hope that captures somewhat what we talked about.
Yeah, but there was one other thing that we had kind of talked about, and what we had talked about was for possible people to realize that the staff is under a lot of pressure, and to maybe be a little more respectful, and a little more helpful and nicer, and not necessarily throw them under the bus so hard that, you know, when they come to the podium or try to answer a question, that they feel like they're being attacked. I mean, we have to realize that, because you're shorthanded. We have to try to do that as our body here to them, to try to work through that. And I'm just gonna ask one more question, then I'll be done. How do we educate people? When Sid had brought it up, when we borrow money for the public safety building, how do we educate when people ask us that question? Well, how can you go out and borrow all these kinds of money to do this, but yet we don't have money to pay for extra employees? I know that question's gonna come up, so how do we educate the people when they ask us that question?
I think it's twofold, and I think the beginning parts, I'm sorry, if I can start, I'll start the conversation, and others join in. But I think the beginning, obviously, is already started with Director Abear coming and talking about the Public Works Building, like we've talked about for a couple of years now. We've talked about it, goodness, we purchased the land in 2013, I think. So that conversation began back then, talking about the lack of space in our public works facility, and the fact that respecting employees also goes toward the work environment that you give them to work in. I was joking a little bit, kind of joking, but very serious, with Attorney Dregney in that, I don't know if you know where Vicky Erdal's office is, in our current Public Works Building. Well, we all know the rain that we had today, and it wasn't a nice trickling downward kind of rain, it was one of those sideways kind of things. She came in and her desk was floating. You know, so...
Did you take a picture?
Well, she came in and Director Abear just immediately said, now, don't worry, we'll clean it up. She couldn't sit down, her chair was wet, her desk was soaked with water, and they had had water issues before, but it hadn't happened to this extent before. So again, the value of a new public works facility, we've all known that building is sort of limping it along. And it's not that we weren't, and we don't take pride in taking care of our public buildings, but there comes a point when you say, what is the cost-benefit analysis here? Is there a benefit to us to continue to put work into this building, or do we do the best we can to limp it along until that decision is made to build the new building? So in my mind, the new building is not a, geez, do you think we need one? It's a, we need one, we've put together a plan, we've been planning since 2013, we've been working with not only staff, but leadership and our common council to design the building, to find out, how does it fit the best needs of our public works group now? How can it also address some of the police department needs, because we know that they've got some storage needs, as well as parks maintenance? Parks maintenance comes out of that same building. We don't want to overbuild, because that's not good, but you never want to build it so tight that in two years, you're out of space, too. So what is that just right fix? So I think that's a big part of, do we believe we need one? Yeah, we do. And it's a couple different ways. I hope that helps.
What I have to answer that back with is, you've had all the education going up to that point, but everybody's gonna forget that.
Sure.
And as soon as the paper writes that they just borrowed, you know, $9 million to build this, everybody's gonna forget that we went through all these stages to get to that point. That's where I'm wondering, how do we educate when people ask us that question at the last minute, so?
I think that's, you're right, Dennis. It's on us, it's on me, and it's on you as older persons, and it's on Bill as a newspaper reporter, to remind folks that this has been, this isn't just a drop-of-the-hat decision. We've been working toward this for years. We've been understanding what the need is, and to help remind folks, here's the need that it's gonna fill, here's why we have to have it, and then, yes, indeed, it's a $9 million borrow. So you all, and if you all have questions, Brett would appreciate coming back to give another presentation. I mean, there was a Committee of the Hole, and that's on WSTO. Maybe we need to do it again, as that time comes a little bit closer. Because you're right, we forget, all of us, forget quickly.
I'll be done with my other questions. I appreciate the time.
Okay. So I had all the person Hirsch, Trul, then Engelberger, and then Borisma.
Thank you. I, like Dennis, have a list of questions. First again, you know, last time that I brought up about the police and fire budget with trying to get additional policemen and fire person into this budget. I realize the budget is tight, but we've been kicking this can down the road for so long. What, how are we planning for next year? I mean, what are we gonna do so we can fill these positions? What are we gonna do differently? I mean, I'm not comfortable, again, leaving it for another year. We just keep on kicking it. And I think this goes back to Dennis's question of, if the police and fire chiefs, you know, came to the mayor and say, this is what we need, what was their backup information that justified this? And if it's a good justification, how can we deny it? I mean, how did you, as the mayor, deny public safety, you know, their requests?
I don't mean this to sound curt, because it's going to, but the same answer that I did to every other department that had staffing requests, our budget doesn't support it. You know, it'd be great if we had more funny, more funny, it's not funny, more money, more revenue. It would be great. I'd love to have it. But when you look at the budgets, and you've all had these line item budgets for a while now, it's not there. I wish it was there. And I go back to my, and I'm nauseam when I talk about growth, and I don't talk about crazy growth, but growth gives your community that net new construction. And right now, for the last probably 10 or so years, that's the only way the state of Wisconsin allows communities to grow. We can like it, or we can hate it, but it's the only way communities are allowed to grow, by their net new construction. I spent last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday with the League of Municipalities, with mayors and village presidents and folks from all over Wisconsin, and that was a big topic of conversation. When I talked with the village president from McFarland, he said, you know, things are great. We can't spend our net new construction. I said, well, you've gotta be one of the few, because we are struggling, because we're not growing enough to provide the vital services that we need. So it's not an easy thing to say, you know what, we just don't have the money. And when we start out with our static budget, like we did last year as well, that allows us to see, what does static look like? And then after we know what static looks like, and I can identify with Tammy's help and all the leadership team's help, what's the gap? Or wouldn't it be great if we didn't have a gap? And then how do we close that? And then once we all sit down and look at that a million more times, is there any other way we can imagine filling the needs of our police, fire, maybe it's the needs of the senior center, because they, again, provide essential services to our community. And when we all look at it again and again, and go, there is no money here. You know, I think we've done the best that we can, Bill's smiling, because I'm going into my same speech, we've done the best that we can with the resources we have available. I wish I had a better answer for you.
So what was our net new construction now that we have this beautiful...
1.755%, about $123,000.
So from the Walmart was 123,000?
That's in a TIF district, as you recall.
Right. But if that's into our revenue, we did jump up by that amount of money?
The value worked out.
And that stays that forever, or just for this year?
It will continue to add value. The issue is that one doesn't help the other. The value that it increased in the TIF district stays in the TIF district. The only place that we do see a benefit is the growth in the equalized value, and hopefully, the growth in the assessed valuation, which surprisingly, will lower the tax rate. The growth in the assessed value just spreads that tax rate out a little bit further. Because my question to Tammy was, when she, as we were going through the numbers, she goes, well, guess what, mayor, your taxes are going down. I was like, well, really, we've got needs. Can't you make them go up?
So then, my question is, how is growth gonna solve the problem? How will growth solve the problem?
Unfortunately...
So growth does not solve the problem. Yeah, you just, you just counter...
Well, you have some growth, at least, versus a zero.
Pardon?
There's a lot of communities that have no increase whatsoever.
Right, but if that growth still doesn't allow us to do anything, and actually lowers our taxes, which means our revenue still goes down, why would we even want more growth? I mean, I'm trying to...
I think what we need to do is, as far as the growth topic, I think maybe what we ought to do at a future meeting is just have a presentation to explain exactly how that works, and give some specific examples of what we've done and what other communities have done. Because there's obviously different philosophies, and I don't think we're gonna agree on anything tonight. And in order to get through the conversation, I think, you know, we should talk about everything and not just one topic.
No, I agree. I got off because that's the way I got off.
But I understand that, because it is frustrating for all parties concerned. It's frustrating for staff, for the mayor, for us, and even community members, because ultimately, we're all trying to provide services.
But it's also important to remember that we're on the same team.
No, 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 I'm just frustrated by...
Well, of course, we're all frustrated by it. But it helps to, you know, again, I think Tammy and I and others had said, if you have questions for tonight, be sure to let us know, because maybe we could have brought some of that data with us. I didn't know what to prepare tonight, so I've got all my stuff that I talked with about everybody, and that's all the line items and everything else. But I don't have the detail on that specific item, so.
So with that, let's go back to my original question, which is, if the net new construction amount is not gonna allow us to plan for the future for these multiple staffing needs, what is your plan, so we're not, we need to provide all these services, and as time goes on with more people, we're gonna need more and more people. What is our plan to fill these gaps? We can't just grow.
As Council President Swadley said, we'll agree to disagree on the net new construction, because I do believe net new construction is how you're allowed to increase your levy. And unless you've got net new construction, your levy is gonna stay right where it's at, which means you're not gonna be able to, unless your cost of things go lower, or you choose to decrease your services, or maybe your quality of services, you're not gonna be able to have that additional resources in there to make a change. That's... Tammy?
The only thing I was going to say is, right now, the state has pretty much restricted you to being able to do anything except for have a referendum, where the community agrees to increase the levy to support the addition of the personnel that you're looking to add.
Yep, good point. We talked a lot about that last week as well. So some communities are choosing to go to referendum for operating capital. It's not, well, it's not done much. There's one community in northern Wisconsin that's done it several times and has not yet been successful. There was the community of Brown Deer that had hoped to go for referendum for their 2018 budget. However, because of the way that the state budget didn't get passed until so late in the year, Lana knows the numbers of days between the requirements and those types of things. There wasn't enough time for them to go to referendum for '18. So they're planning to go, and they're planning to ask in '19. It's a new concept, but it's certainly something that can be looked at.
Okay. So I got another question. And I'm sorry that AJ isn't here, and I should have thought about this earlier, but for, so if we give the staff that 2.25% cost of living increase, then we talked about getting staff up to the right step, where is that money coming from? Where is that in that budget to get the personnel up to those correct steps? Because I don't see that in our budget, and I guess I need to know if that's gonna be coming back to us, saying, if it's in the budget, then how is it in the budget?
It's currently within each department where whatever individual saw that increase or change in step. I know that there were, the library department was brought into the system, so the library employs, it's in the library budget. There were two managers that I think went to midpoint, and that would be within their respective budgets. And then the increase is throughout the entire budget in the various departments.
So the ones that are being proposed for this year, the changes in their job descriptions or step, that's already been incorporated into this budget? I'm not talking about what we've already approved, but what we're anticipating approving?
Yeah, AJ and I worked on it, and...
AJ would have been here tonight if she knew you had questions.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, it's been incorporated into the budget that you see.
Okay. And lastly, going through the budget things, it seems like through utilities and our budget, there's a number of possibilities of kind of shared expenses, like when they have lawn mowing expenses, or tree trimming. Is there a way that, instead of utilities contracting out for those, that they could actually contract the city for those kind of expenses, and so that may help us afford to employ another employee for public works that they're needing?
Wouldn't know that answer without talking to Utilities Director Cardas and Director Abear.
But is that a possibility, that utilities could actually contract out the city to do their mowing and their tree trimming, so that it could actually, because I know they're looking for...
What little I know about tree trimming is that we're not qualified to do it. And I don't mean that to sound, I mean, we do some, but to the extent, near electrical wires, we cannot. We don't do a lot of tree trimming on our own, just because it's a very hazardous thing to do, and we're just not appropriately trained.
I have older person Trul, then Engelberger, and then Borisma.
Thank you. A more general question about the positions that folks are looking for. Mayor, could you tell me what that process is when any department comes in for a request for a position? What do we do? Do we do any type of review of that position? Namely, you know, does AJ take a look at it in terms of identifying potential costs? Tell me what happens from that standpoint, to start with.
Absolutely. AJ will take the position request and use the information that she's collected through the Springstead Study. If it's a brand-new position, she will talk to her folks there, her consultants, and identify, well, what would the cost be? Because we can't even entertain the idea if we don't know what the full cost would be. We know what costs are for benefits, FICA, WRS, those types of things. The job descriptions have typically already been put together, or a draft has been put together by the department head that's requesting the new position. And from that, we can make our best guess at what that cost might be. Before it would go forward at all, even if there was the funds available, it would have to go through personnel and the rest of the council approvals before that could happen.
And that's kind of where I'd like to go, is... And that's kinda where I'd like to go is, is, um, back to Regina's question. It's the same question I asked basically at, at a previous committee of the whole, if not now, when? Um, and so I guess my question on that is, given the fact that it, it sounds as, um, as you were describing a couple of minutes ago, it sounds as if you basically are saying, "Look, we don't have any money, so we can't do anything." So pretty much we, we ruled out most of the positions.
For next year.
For next year.
For next year.
In terms of, of additional positions. Um, I guess my, my question is, have we in the past or would we consider in, in the future looking at those kind of requests and treating them much as we do with, with, you know, a CIP-type plan to say, "Look, within the next couple of years." Because we heard a number of the department heads come in and say they've asked for the things a number of times. We've kicked it down, down, down the hill or whatever. And I, and I really think that becomes part of what we need to be doing. And I, and I guess I was curious in terms of the process because, um, how do we evaluate a senior center employee, a, a, um, theater employee, a police person in terms of, of either the needs and the like? And I think, I think that's really what we need to be doing. I'm, I'm still inclined and, and, you know, would like to offer that opportunity for us to, to at least add one, one, one police position to this budget. But I, I think, you know, what we need to be doing is, is planning for those things. And, and saying, just as we're planning, you know, again, with our CIP and, and major, major equipment, there is a reality that we have to, we're gonna have to add staff. And, and if we're not putting some type of, of plan together, we're gonna continue to find ourselves, much as we did, you know, a number of years ago with our road reconstruction. We just didn't have a plan, we got behind, and then we suddenly had to, had to spend extensive dollars. And so I think we need to be doing something on that and, and I guess, you know.
I think that's a great proposal and would look forward to taking that to the Personnel Committee to, to look toward those things.
And I, and I think, I think that's something we, we need to do. The other, the other question I have, though, um, within the packet this evening, we have your, your proposed budget. And as I read down the columns, and perhaps I'm missing something. We've got the, the 2016 activity, the 2017 amended budget, the 2018 department requested budget. And we have the 2018 mayor's proposed budget. And then the next column is the change from department request to mayor's proposed. And I'm struggling with that column because, again, I'm under the oppression that police asks for people, fire asks for people, senior asks for people, things like that. And when I look at this, I don't see.
No, you won't see that here. You'll see that in the document that we gave you that looks like this.
I get it, but what, but what I, what I, then, then why are we, why are, why do we have this category that infers that the department? What this is saying is that the departments, the departments requested what you gave them. Unless I'm missing something.
No, no, what we're talking about here is, um, when we sit down and we talk about, Lori Sullivan used to call it scrubbing the budget. We'd sit down and we would look at the trend. I'm not gonna be able to find one off the top of my head. But we'd look at the trend for particular costs. And if in going through a budget, um, the director said, "Okay, I used," again, I'm not gonna find anything off the top of my head. "This has always been the amount that I've put in here." And I would say, "Well, but the trend, when you look at the budget and you look at the actual, your trend doesn't match up with your request. Let's talk a little bit more about that. What does that really mean?" And then we'd dig into the details of it. And then they'd go, "You know, you're right. I could reduce that by $2,000." Or, "Oh, I forgot about."
So what you're actually saying is that, that this column is, is saying, after they've requested and you've convinced them or, or showed them that they, we don't have the dollars.
We've discussed it. It's.
Then we have a request. And then we're, we're identifying the difference between that modified request and your budget. And that's inferring to me that we have a very little change between the department request and what the mayor's proposing.
There's not much to change. Am I saying that right?
But, but your honor, i- i- if, if, if I'm, as I'm looking at this, and I, I do budgets for, you know, a part of my own business. If, if my staff comes and asks for, to add staff and in any one of these lines, in any of the categories that, that folks requested additional, either additional staff or additional contract services or other things, to be fair, this, this document that I'm looking at, and anybody from the, from the city or any citizen who would look at this, I, I believe that it, it, the, the real department request ought to reflect what they requested.
Okay.
And, and, and so, so again, from this discussion about adding staff, um, you know, uh, whether we were talking about, um, again, a, a number of departments had requested those things. And so especially since we've got the, the extra category of the change from the department request to the mayor's proposal, it infers that there's an awful lot more uniformity here than I think there really is.
I understand what you're saying. I, just a quick comment in that we've used this form for several years now and certainly willing to change it.
Right.
If you'd like to, probably not gonna happen tonight though.
I, I, I get it. I guess the, the challenge is it's, it's in context of talking about the personnel. And I think that's the, the part. Ultimately, my, my, my two messages here are, one, I think it's incumbent upon us to create a plan and, and talk about what we can and can't do. Um, and, and whether it's personnel, um, department and committee, there ought to be some way, we ought to be creating some level of, of evaluation of the requests for positions. You know, it isn't a guarantee that, that a, that a police or a fire, uh, position is the most important or the most, uh, gets the most, most value to the, to the city. So there ought to be some process for, for evaluating that or putting some point system or something there. But furthermore, like I said, this, this kind of reporting is really frustrating to me because you're giving us what effectively is a line item budget and it feels like it has, as you said, it's already been scrubbed. And I, and I think it's a challenge, um, to, to really be able to, to go and educate the, the community and talk about what we're actually looking for. Because in reality, we have, we have significantly more requests and significantly more needs than we can afford. And I appreciate that you, you've, you've worked, you know, with a, a zero-based budget here. But I, but I really do think that those two things need to happen. I think we need to start reporting it more accurately as what people are looking for. And then we do need to plan for, for the positions. Because I've yet to meet any, I've yet to have a conversation with any of the staff people that I've had over the last few weeks that, that don't, aren't exactly as, as Plan Director indicated. They're, they're, they're going full out. They're, they're serving the city very well. Um, and I think it's incumbent upon us to, to take care and, and realize that, that we are gonna make, need to make some tough choices and add some dollars because we're enlarging the community. And whatever the value of the new growth is, we can guarantee that we're going to have more calls out there. Uh, and so we're going to have more EMS, fire, and police calls. We're going to have additional, uh, street requirements. And, and so we, if we're looking for the growth, we have to realize we have to support it.
Absolutely. I would not disagree. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I have Alder Person Engelberger and then Boersma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna ask a question of Tammy. And I was gonna make a statement, but I'm not gonna make it. It's to do with the state, uh, the state of Wisconsin, how they fund things. I'm not even gonna bother. Otherwise, I might say something I might regret. Um, Tammy, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Can you explain how we get to that number?
Net new construction.
Net new construction.
How we came up with that number?
How do we get to that number? We, I mean, how much construction did we have this year? And how does that equate to a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
I don't know if I have that with me. I do have it, but I don't have it here.
Maybe Rodney can say how much construction we've had this year?
I don't have it. I don't.
Was it ten mil, ten or thirteen million? I don't really know. I'm sorry. I, had I known, I could have brought it. Sorry. But what I can do is send you an email tomorrow morning first thing.
You can go, the 1.75%.
1755, yes.
What, what's the maximum that can be?
Oh, I don't, I could, it could be in the forties, fifties. It depends on what's going on in your community. Zero, of course, is your base.
Your net new construction or your new buildings minus.
What does the 1.755 reflect? Does it reflect the, what the value was the year before to what the value is now, assessment value?
Whatever was in place as the first of.
First of each year.
January 1st, 2017. So the change from January 1st, 2016 to 17, that's what that change reflects.
Change of assessed value?
I believe so. Because I know the year before it was 1.9796, something like that.
1.90.
So it does change every year.
But I'm trying to figure out how that 175 equals 123,000.
There is a calculation that the Department of Revenue puts together and I'd be happy to share it with you. I'll see if I can locate it while we're talking, but otherwise I'm gonna have to.
Why don't you just bring it back? It gets difficult to try to find it while we're talking tonight. It just.
I guess I just wanna say, you know, with Dennis's point about, uh, you know, eight million dollars or nine million dollars you can borrow for a building or you can, we can give away five million dollars for, you know, TIF money or whatever. But you can't put, you can't spend another, another 150,000 to put two more officers on. You know, I mean, the problem we have is, soon as I'm done. The problem we have is the way the state law mandates how municipalities and school districts can, can assess, uh, can spend their money, you know, and can collect their money, revenue. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's appalling what's happened. And, and, you know, it's happened year after year after year. It's been happening for years now. And everybody trims the fat and trims the fat and trims the fat. And, you know, you get to the point where you just, you can't do anything unless you, unless you have a, a super amount of growth, which hardly anybody does. I mean, if we keep, uh, we keep electing people that's philosophy is to give a raise, their idea of giving a raise is a tax cut? That's, that's why we're in this vote. So let's keep electing people who are electing to state office and, and the federal office.
Did you have an answer?
Yeah, I do. One quick thing, um, the, the issue between adding personnel and borrowing funds, it's because the borrowing and debt is outside of the levy calculation. Operations falls within the tax levy. So that's why it's so difficult and that's why most commu, not most, but some communities continue to fund debt to be able, to be able to accomplish what they need to because that's the only way they could do it. In looking at the growth factor, the net new construction, what happens is it's a pretty complicated worksheet that the state puts out for the, from the Department of Revenue. They take, um, the prior year tax levy and then they take the new construction or 1.755% of that number. And that's how they calculate net new construction or the 123,000.
Before we move on, just to follow up on that. So what I'd like to see at a future meeting is if we can project that formula on the board. And then based on what we know is happening in our current developments and then make, maybe make an assumption on the rest of everything else being the same next year as it is this year. Where, where we might be a year from now when we're having this conversation. Is it gonna be more or less or the same or we just can't figure it out? Because I think that's part of the challenge. With, with the school district, they, you know, they do their budgets every year and their formula where it's on a two-year biennial. And I think it's a lot easier for them in their budgeting process because it's based on values, but it's also based on, um, students, which they count. And for us, it's based on this construction and we typically don't have an ongoing conversation about where we were at or where we even wanna be. And based on the net new construction this year, even if we doubled it and had three and a half percent growth, we would still be having this conversation about not being able, able to address all of our staffing needs. We'd have to at least triple it. Well, to me, that's not realistic because you're not gonna just triple it and hire a bunch of people because you're gonna have other issues that come with that growth. And I think that's the type of conversation, I think we need to have a big picture conversation down the line. And I think part of that conversation is that this council should draft a resolution and go on record and send it down to the Capitol and explain to them what is going on here in the real world. So there's an understanding at the state level of what the decisions that are made there, how they're affecting us locally. We heard again tonight, we have an unfunded mandate to have, by WIDAC, the Economic Development Group, to have audits for our redevelopment area. This is a new thing. More money we have to spend for something because, quite frankly, because of issues that they've had in the past. And now we're paying the price for that and, and new costs that we have to absorb. It's outrageous. So I think what we need to do is, we need to have this conversation and say, "What are we gonna do about it? Are we gonna sit here and complain about it? Are we gonna take action?" Certainly, we can have a conversation about a referendum. That's a long shot, you know, especially right now. The, you know, the community has been divided on many issues in the past several years. We need to pull together as a group and figure out what we're gonna do, get on the same page, and put out a plan on where we're gonna go. And the sooner we do that, the better. Because right now, we're just kinda, you know, playing it from paycheck to paycheck, basically. And that's the unfortunate reality about where we find ourselves now. But I think as a group and as a community, we've got a tremendous amount of knowledge and talent and ability to change that. And I, I think that's the type of conversations I'd like to see us have and go forward. And I know our staff can be a huge part of that conversation as well. So that's all I'm gonna say. I think I had Alder Person Boersma and then.
Yeah, just, just a few things. One, one is I know I've been the, uh, one, one person, at least one of a few that have been questioning this facility, this public works facility. However, um, I think that we all should have answerability to our constituents and part of that comes from actual constituents of mine who questioned whether or not we would need that kind of facility. And I'm not necessarily against the facility, but I'm, I'm, you know, money is money. And if we borrow it, uh, we're still spending it. And I think like having, having, uh, the fuel station cut out of that wasn't necessary. We, we did some trimming on that. I think that's a positive move and I think we do that. I can, I'll also point out a couple of other things. We, I think we've, you know, we're, we're not necessarily adding new staff, but we may be, we may be doing better with, with staff anyway. One is our forester. We hired a forester. We increased, I believe, uh, our quality of, of our, our, our trees in the city. I think we've got, you know, that, we, we upgraded that. We've used Springstad for doing that. I've been on Personnel since I've been on Council, I believe. And I think we, I think we do a good job. I think that all our efforts at, at saving money and, um, and largely from staff who's helped with that, including AJ and Tammy and Rodney and just everybody, I think has been, we save money on our medical, uh, this, you know. So we are, you know, I think our staff should be commended for all the work that they do. I mean, this is like, just looking at this budget is, is kind of overwhelming. And, um, you know, I know, I know specifically in, in our library, we, you know, they found some money. Um, we've, we've had Sunday hours now. We've, you know, increased our, uh, ability to say, serve people. I think we can use additional staff, but I think our, our personnel have done an incredible job working with the means that we have. And, um, you know, I just, I, I just wanted to thank our staff for doing such a, a bang-up job to, to, to actually get us through this period. So that's all I wanted to say. I really do think we need to support our staff and we need, we need to acknowledge that. They've done a great service for our council.
Okay. Alder Person Hirsch and then Kedlson.
Thanks. Um, one, um, one question is that our motion I'd like to, or suggestion is to follow up with what you said about maybe forming a, a subcommittee to address the municipality issues with where the state government is kinda holding us to this, you know, can't raise the levy and how it's kinda strapping us. So I think maybe as a smaller group of, um, of council members, maybe we can like brainstorm and come up with a good letter or recommendations that we can share with the rest of the council before we send it up to Madison. I think we need to do that. We can't, you said, I agree, we don't. Just for better words, bitching and complaining about it isn't gonna change it. You need to figure. You need to figure out a way to change it, and you need to get our voices heard. So, I would suggest that we form a, a smaller group to come up with something to present to council for their approval, sooner rather than later. Second, I know we, it's like beating a dead horse with respect to the police and fire budget, but there's one budget item that still resonates with me with Chief Wagner, where he said that, you know, there's a fifteen-hundred-dollar item on his budget that was not funded that would raise some of the stipends or whatever for the volunteers. And he felt it was unjust that we give all the other staff two-point-two, two-point-two-five percent raise, and then the volunteers that we depend on don't even get a little smidgen of increase. So I would highly encourage that we find that measly fifteen-hundred dollars and at least show some support for volunteers at, it's in his little bubble thing.
I think it was. I don't think that number is the correct number.
It was for overtime.
Well, it's on your bubble thing.
Well, I appreciate what you're asking for, but I think that fifteen-hundred dollars, he was talking about overtime for one of his staff members.
It was for the forty hours.
The, the staff person, and I always say the word wrong, is in a, is a salaried person. So they would not get overtime anyway.
Okay.
So again, to, to be true to the request. He requested it, it's on the bubble diagram. That particular individual does not qualify for overtime.
So that budget item is in.
That particular item.
Is, it shouldn't have been on there at all, so. Okay.
Now, what you're saying, though, about his request that the volunteers receive an increase, I don't, I don't debate that at all. There just was, again, back talking about, where's the data? You know, show me how much you think that increase should be for a volunteer, and based upon what? You know, so he was still working on that, and that isn't ready at this time, that I'm aware of.
So, it's not ready, so it's not in this current budget, but yet, when would it be ready? I mean.
Yeah, I don't know. Unless Tammy has had further conversations with him, I have not.
No, I have not had any further conversations.
I have not.
So I.
So two different items, but I.
Okay, well, when it was presented, it, it said it was at fifteen-hundred dollars, so that's why.
It was mixed up, yep.
So I have Alder Person, Kittleson, and then Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanna add one thing quick. When we go to vote on this, I believe it's the next council in November?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, that's the night of the public hearing as well.
Well, we would wanna make, I apologize.
Go ahead.
I think you would wanna make, or reaffirm, there is a motion on the floor to approve as it is. Now, if your discussion tonight, and that's to you, if you wanna make any changes to it, that's yours to do. What's before you is my proposed budget. It's to the council to review it, make amendments, if that's what your, your wish is to do. But there's, there is already a motion on the floor to approve it. You can make another motion, you can make amendments. It has to be approved by the common council on November fourteenth.
I, I guess that comes back to where I'm at with the education of the public, because a lot of times, we kinda bring up the public safety building for the borrowing that money. So I think it would be very important for what you just read there. So, the people that are listening and/or reading about this, that's written in the hub, understand that borrowing and this are two separate items. So we don't run into that risk of, why can you do this and you can't do that? And that would kind of, I feel if we do it the night that we do the voting on this, it would kinda reassure the people then that they can't come back and ask that question. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And what I can do is even take language straight out of the statutes and make it easy for people to, easier for people to understand, hopefully.
Well, I would do it in layman's terms.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I would do it in the attorney terms.
Sometimes reading their language. The one thing I did wanna say real quickly is that the public hearing notice is going to appear in Thursday's newspaper. We're required to publish that ahead of time. That notices the meeting for the fourteenth. And what is in that notice is based on the mayor's proposed budget, because as of the last meeting, nothing had changed. So, if you have changes, that's something we discuss the night of the, after the hearing.
So I have Alder Person, Johnson.
Thank you. This is just a comment as far as the whole process of the budget and how we got it presented. It was all done very well, but for somebody like me, I'd like to see this information prior, because that night, we sat through and we went through all of these sheets here. And we, it was the first time we got to look at it, and we had all the heads here, but we didn't get to digest it. So, we kinda lost the opportunity to be able to ask the heads or the department heads any questions. So now we have to take time out of a day to do that. And I just wish I could had the information prior. So, when the heads came up to do their presentation, I had any questions, I could ask them at that point.
Absolutely. The department heads were here that first evening to present what you had in the blue diagram, to talk about services, because our budget is a service-based budget.
Right.
And in order to provide the services, we need the people. They were back the next time to just answer any questions that you may have had. If you remember, we had another budget meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday evening, so that you could continue to talk to the leadership team about, about questions that you may have, or always email or give us a call, whatever. To, to ask the leadership team to come tonight after the council meeting was cumbersome at best, because you didn't know what time council was gonna be over. Some of them live out of town. It, it did, it was, it was cumbersome, we'll put it that way, and that's why you don't see the folks here. They'd love to come before you again, if you have questions, to answer those questions.
But you get what I was saying, that if I had, we had time to study this and look at it, it's a lot easier to.
Can I be really honest and say that the reason you received this, and we talked about it first, was because the focus has to be on the services and listening to the department heads when they talked about it? And then after, after they explained what their services were and what they were asking for, that's when the line items went out. In the past, if, and you can tell me I'm, I'm full of hot air, and that's okay. But my experience is if we hand out a line item budget, you're gonna be looking at the line item budget, and you're not gonna necessarily be hearing what the department heads have to tell you. So the, the flow is, here is the, this sheet with all the, the requests of the static budget, and then the requested additions. And then after we've discussed all of that, then here's the line items that make that all up. And then we get back together to talk about what questions does all that information make you ask, or allow you to have, I guess? I'm not sure that that explained it well.
No, I just, I just don't agree. I know that's how you guys wanna present it, but I felt it was almost like a, a sales job. And I, I know what they do. I do really know what they do.
But the citizens don't always.
Pardon?
Citizens don't always. So when our budget meetings are communicated and taped.
Okay.
And, and on air, that's, all right.
And next year, Tim, I want it different, okay? Thank you.
I had Alder Person, Truel, and then Johnson.
Not exactly understanding exactly what you were hoping for this evening. I would ask and offer, I would, I would ask that a, that an amendment be drafted. And the reason I have to, I'm wording it this way, is I need someone to clarify the number. But I would ask with the intent of offering an amendment to the budget to add one additional police officer to the 2018 budget. The reason I, I think we need clarification is within the, the packet, we were instructed originally that each position was gonna cost eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. But you may recall, the chief had originally asked for two positions, and it had a net value of a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred. And he was indicating that there was some monies available because of part-time personnel and also a reduction of overtime. And so I don't believe I have the, the appropriate numbers to figure out what the exact financial effect of it is. But it is my intent to offer that amendment to add one person, one police officer to the general patrol as a part of the 2018 budget. And I would ask that, that the financial impact be determined, so that it can be brought up on, on the fourteenth.
You actually had that from last time, right? Tammy, you actually handed that out last year? Last week? 'Cause we made, we tried to go with that amendment last week?
Oh, actually, A.J. put that together because she wanted to let everyone know what the true cost to an officer would be. It's not just the wage and benefits itself, there's also training, there's uniform. I can't remember what was all on that sheet.
So let me just, when you have a second, Alder Person, Truel. So, are you offering an amendment now, or you're gonna offer one later? And then.
I'll offer it now. I wasn't quite sure what the process was in terms of.
That's what I'm asking. What should the process be? And then the follow-up question would be is, where or who is gonna determine where the monies would be coming from to cover that additional expense?
This is the comment, question.
The, the one comment that the chief did make about there being funds available from part-time wages, that is false. When I went through and looked at the 2017 wages and compared it to what was in 18, I've been over that spreadsheet back and forward with other people. And they, for some reason, had assumed that there were additional wages included in the 17 budget, when in fact, that's not the case. So that additional funding was not available.
We had that last week, and I think. I don't know where it is.
Well, he may have been considering that if he had another additional officer, he wouldn't need as much overtime. I think it's probably where he is coming from.
Probably true.
And that was, that was where, again, in his original budget, budget document back on October third, he'd indicated that that, at that point, if, if there were two officers brought on board, it would, it would save the overtime budget by about twenty thousand dollars.
And, and looking at the overtime budget through the month of Octo-, or September that we just put out, the budget's a hundred and four thousand, and they're already at a hundred and one.
For overtime?
Yes. Now, some of it, though, is covered by grants, so we need to, you know.
Scott, last week, we did get this, it said, this, I don't know if you got this handout.
Yeah.
One would be ninety-eight thousand dollars. That includes the uniform and the weapon. And then a fire full-time would be eighty-three-five. That includes all the uniform and everything. And last week, we tried to pass it, well, I tried to pass amendment to at least get one of each that would start at mid-year to a tune of, you know, half that cost. And so I would support your motion, because I tried it last week, so.
So, that gets back to the process question. If, if you wanna do an amendment, you can make it, we can get a second, we can have a conversation. But ultimately, we have to decide who's gonna determine where the money's coming from. And so, I guess, what's your pleasure? Or you want me to keep going and come back to it, or?
I, I, again, from my standpoint, I, I believe that's, that is, is a discussion that we've gotta, I'm, I'm challenging the, the, the budget effectively and saying, let's see if we can find a way to, to fund it.
Okay. Okay, so is that gonna be a motion, or should I keep going?
I thought there was a motion in the second.
I was asking what the process was. If you want a motion today, I'll offer it.
It's whatever you want it to be. It's only gonna be a recommendation, so.
That's why I wasn't sure. That, that's why I guess I wanted, you know, just to make sure we were on the same page.
I think the agenda allows action, so we can make a recommendation, if that's what you so choose. Or we can wait till it comes to the council, or we can try to do something between now and the fourteenth.
I'm fine, again, trying to track down the, the correct numbers and, and make sure we're on the same page, you know, for the fourteenth. I just wasn't sure what our process was at this point.
That's gonna take some time. If you would like to make that motion, you all will have to have that discussion about where will the money come from, what overtime could be reduced. That's gonna, in my opinion, and I don't mean to speak out of turn, but that'll happen, have to happen between now and the fourteenth. That can't be done that evening.
So, I mean, we could talk about this again on, on the first meeting in November.
That is your first meeting in November.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I think you gotta act on it now, or we're not gonna pass the budget.
Okay, I'll, we'll keep coming, and then we'll come back, if that's what you wanna do. So I had Alder Person, Johnson, and then I had Boersma.
Yeah, a couple of things. Comment on, on this amendment or proposed amendment. I'm fine with adding an officer, I think I'd love to add two of them. However, my concern is, is the sustainability of it. And we've already talked about that. You know, there's only X number of dollars in the budget, and where's that gonna come from, from year to year to year to year? So, I need to have that answered before I could vote for that. The other thing I was gonna suggest is that in changing the budgeting process, which was, has been alluded to, I'm wondering if, and I'm not sure if we can do this logi- logistically, but if we could include, and I think we've, you and I have actually talked about this, I think, include the department chairs, or the department committee chairs within the budgeting process somehow. Either, either as individuals within the process itself, or in any capacity at where the department budget would be reviewed with the, with that department's appropriate committee, prior to coming to council. Something along those lines, I think. It'd be an additional step. I don't know if it would be logi- logistically possible, but might, it might make things go better.
I had Alder Person, Boersma.
Yeah, and I, I would be interested, I respect what Scott is anticipating potentially doing. But, you know, and I think borrowing from overtime dollars to supplement getting a new officer is notable. And, but I would like to know from the chief whether or not we actually are gonna be able to save overtime dollars by having another officer on staff. You know, it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna be able to get more money from that overtime if, if, I mean, who knows if it's, so that's the kinda question that I would wanna ask Chief Locke. There's no doubt, I mean, because, you know, if we're gonna save money on, save money, you know, from overtime, you know, are we, can we add an officer, or is it, is it gonna be just a wash? I, you know, I don't know if that's the case.
Alder Person, my asking.
It sounds really plaus-, you know, plausible to add another officer. However, how many of you have read the October twelfth email from Human Resources Director, ask, in regards to the request for police officers? She brought up some really good points about asking some questions here. I haven't seen any of these answered, or even asked. You know, the, the chief said, we need officers because our guys are running all the time. And we could use two more. Well, you know, there's gonna be some shifts in, according to, and these are some really good questions. And I suggest you all look at these before you start voting. We, we have a new IT position. It took off time off of one officer. Where did that, where did that workload go? Are the, are the sergeants, are the lieutenants, are they out on doing community policing, or are they sitting at a desk? Response type the calls, and how long do those calls take? So are they two minutes, or are they there for twenty minutes? Questions that aren't being asked. We really need to look at those.
I asked them last week, those questions.
Sorry, I wasn't here. I'm sitting here now. So, I've, I'm not convinced. You know, everybody needs, we need three arbors. We've got a, we've got a urban forest that's beginning to fall in on its ears. The, the city assets that are necess-, that, that those, that those bring in, and the, the tax base that it increases, because the, the values of those properties go up because of the maturity of those trees, and the health of those trees. You know, like, every single department that has asked for something has very valid points. But, as the mayor said, you know, we have ten gallons of water, and we're, and we're trying to fit fifteen gallons into it, into a ten-gallon container. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna happen. Hard questions have to be asked. Right now, until I get some really good, solid reasoning, and that, I don't believe that's been given, and that, and that's what Scott was asking earlier. And, and that's what, uh, Scott was asking earlier about, you know, give me some hard data. Even, even the, the police officer request, that's not there. So, until that's there, can't support it.
Well, I certainly think that if, if that's something that you want to request, you should be able to get that between now and November 14th.
I will do my darndest.
Anybody else have anything? Otherwise, you know, there's really.
I'll move to adjourn then.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Yeah, thanks for the good conversation. Always great. One of my favorite groups to be with. Pretty simple, it's not, I thought it was pretty nice. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
No, I did, but he was saying one of my favorite groups, I think.
Oh, my God. The message, the sky's going to come down.
Neighbor lives down the hill.